Good evening and welcome. I'm Kathy Thompson, President of the Red Clay School Board of Education. I'm calling this meeting, this regular meeting of the school board on April 8th to order. It's 7:00 PM. This meeting is being held electronically by Zoom, as everyone knows. On March 12th, 2020, our Governor Carney issued a declaration of a state of emergency for the state of Delaware due to a public health threat. The state of emergency allows all public meetings of executive brand bodies, executive brand public bodies, including the Board of Education, to be conducted either electronically or by means of telephone conference call or video conference. The information regarding this meeting, including information on how to access the meeting electronically, was published on April 1, 2020, on the Red Clay School District website under public notices. Individuals may participate in this meeting via Zoom conferencing. This is the first time we've held an electronic board meeting using Zoom, so we thank you for your patience as we work through details. As a courtesy to others and to prevent unnecessary disruption, we ask that you please mute your devices unless you have elected and are recognized to speak during public comment. And there are one, two, three, four, five public comments. Individuals who are not members of the board will be muted during the meeting. In order to maximize the effectiveness of this meeting, we will do the following. There will be a roll call vote taking to ensure that each member is accounted for during any action item. During items submitted by the board or board discussion, we ask that we regularly pause and ask if anyone has questions on the board. Please do not speak until this time. Remember that votes require an official roll call, minute approvals, and other motions made before the board. This meeting is being recorded and everything about it will be recorded. During these unprecedented times, we are all learning, and this is our first public Zoom board meeting. This meeting will be run according to board policy, which is found on the Red Clay website. The board is thankful that you have come out tonight, grateful to have you here, and wants to hear from you. Under Board Policy 2004, the meeting will be run in accordance with Robert's rules. Only one person at a time has the floor, and in fairness to all who want to speak and be heard, we ask that there is no over speaking. Personally, on behalf of the board, we want to thank all of our Red Clay employees, our administrators, educators, nutrition workers, custodians, bus drivers, secretaries, district and office school staffs, et cetera, for all of the hard work they are doing during this difficult period. I know that many are working double and triple time in difficult circumstances in order to get the job done. Everyone is pulling together to work together and to learn and grow from this experience. We recognize it, commend you for it, and thank you profusely for all you are doing for our students, their families, and our community. As always, Red Clay is leading the way, and we thank you. So the meeting is called to order. Is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented? I don't hear anything. Is there a motion among the board? Is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
Hey Kathy, good evening, everyone. President Thompson, we need to ensure that all board members' mics are unmuted.
Okay.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Maria, are you going to do a roll call vote, please?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Dr. Bone?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Dr. Newton? Dr. Newton, are you there?
He needs to be unmuted.
Dr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Sabo? Ms. Sabo? Ms. Sabo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson? Mr. Wilson? Mr. Wilson? Tony, is Mr. Wilson unmuted?
Yes, but he needs to confirm on his end. So when it comes, I'm not sure if he's hitting the button to unmute.
Mr. Wilson? Do you want me to proceed?
Yes, I think you should proceed, Maria.
Okay, Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
So it's six, yes, one, not, no response. Motion does carry.
Yeah, so we've got our agenda. Thank you all very much. Next order of business is the pledge of allegiance. Okay, you ready? A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, and now it's public comment. So first up is Sarah Fulton. Ms. Fulton, welcome. Oh, and Ms. Fulton and all the public comment people, our board rules indicate that everyone gets three minutes to speak. My understanding is that Mr. Clements will unmute you so you can speak for three minutes, and at the end of the three minutes, he will mute you. I believe we will get a 30-second warning prior to the end of that. Is that right, Tony?
Yes.
Yes. You'll have a 30-second warning prior to the three minutes when you're cut off. So welcome, Ms. Fulton.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Sarah Fulton. I live here in the Cool Spring neighborhood in Wilmington. I actually live right next door to Lewis Elementary. I am a proud K-12 public school graduate. I'm the daughter of a teacher. As many of you know, I am running for Red Clay School Board this spring. I'm an advocate, and I hope to bring my involvement in my community and the city of Wilmington and the community at large here to this board. But enough about that tonight, and I hope we have more time to talk about that later. But today, I really just wanted to speak and express my gratitude to all of the members of the Red Clay School District who have taken what is seemingly an insurmountable challenge and have turned it into as good of an opportunity as possible. So thank you to all of our educators, our paraprofessionals, and our administrators for working around the clock to figure out how to do remote learning. And I know that our students and our parents and the whole community are really grateful for all of the work that they have put in. Moreover, I want to thank the school nurses and the nutrition staff, the secretaries, and all of the administration, the custodial staff, and really all essential staff that are working around the clock to make sure that Red Clay schools are kept safe at this time and that everyone can have a meaningful education experience given the circumstances. So I just wanted to really express my gratitude and to lend an ear tonight to see if there's anything that I can do in this time to help make our school district stronger during these times. But I hope that I get the chance to meet all of you in person over the coming months, and I hope that I can earn your vote on June 16th. That's all I have for you. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Ms. Fulton. Next up is Mr. Stephen Fackenthal. Welcome, Steve.
Thank you, Kathy. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you so much. Good evening, board members. My name is Stephen Fackenthal, music teacher at Ritchie Elementary and political action chair for the Red Clay Education Association. I'm here to speak tonight on behalf of our educators regarding our new life that is now remote learning and the communication concerns our educators have been experiencing through this process. Let it be known that we all recognize the unprecedented circumstances we are currently experiencing, and we are all committed to doing our very best for our students and families. Our educators are learning new platforms, conducting a multitude of Zoom meetings, and developing and delivering remote specialized instruction as well as anything else possible to meet the needs of our learners. We recognize there are some elements outside of our control, but there is also plenty we can control. During this period, it is easy to compare with some districts, schools, and individual teachers what doing or being asked to do versus others. This leads to anxiety, rumors, and frustration in our Red Clay community at a time when there is too much of that already. Clear, concise communication is important at all times, but is particularly vital during times of uncertainty, as is now overburdening a group of educators that are already working tirelessly. Some examples of miscommunication across buildings have included varying expectations of educators and how they should be helping their students with special needs, amount of contacts educators should be attempting with students, teaching of new material versus not teaching of new material when marking period three ends and what work can and cannot be included. RCA has been holding weekly conversation with district leadership around these and other issues for the past month, as recently as this afternoon. We appreciate these conversations, and our hopefully more productive course of action going forward can include: any and all communication that should apply to all teachers come directly from one source. If information must be disseminated, it should come with the explicit requirement that it be in its original form and in its totality. Example dose. Future remote learning resource packets include complete answer keys and solutions in order to best support our families and to not require hundreds of educators to duplicate this work individually or as grade-level teams. And finally, information be provided to parents regarding report cards and marking period three. As we continue in this remote learning time, I'm hopeful we can continue working together to strengthen these areas, to truly respect the work of our educators, and to best inform and support our families for the betterment of our students. Thank you very much, board.
Thank you, Mr. Fackenthal. Ms. Grace Sotley, welcome, Grace.
Thank you for having me. Just wanted to introduce myself to everybody. Or if familiar, please, because I'm actually a former K district student. I went to Patroway. I also went to Charter, and my mom was a teacher for a long time with the Red Clay School District. So I'm just very excited to get to introduce myself to you and run this year for a district key. Given that, I think it'd be a great experience to bridge my experience as a former Red Clay and a current college student and try to bring any diversity and I have to the board. I'm very grateful to be able to hopefully draw that parallel that the government has set the precedent of appointing a new youth membership leader to the State Board of Education. So I'm excited to meet everyone, hopefully one day, not virtually. And I'm also excited to speak on this meeting to see what things that are going on. I also am very grateful for everything you're doing. I can attest as a student that things are absolutely right now with having to convert to. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you very much, Grace. Next up is Mr. Martin Wilson. Martin?
Unfortunately, Mr. Wilson is not in the room. He says his system is still buffering.
Oh, so he's got a problem. He maybe needs to shut his computer down and restart.
Yes.
Okay. So.
Lastly is Catherine Thompson.
Thank you, Maria. Okay. Well, hi, everyone. As you know, my name is Kathy Thompson, and I'm seeking reelection to the Red Clay School Board, of which I've been a member for the past 10 years. Most of you know me well, having seen me for 10 years. I hope you know that I love Red Clay, and I have a proven commitment to Red Clay as well as a very strong and hard work ethic on behalf of Red Clay. I've lived in Red Clay for over 30 years. I've worked in Red Clay as an attorney for the DePont Company for almost 40 years. My children attended and were graduated from Red Clay schools. My daughter works at Warner Elementary as a teacher in a job she adores with students and faculty that she also loves and respects. I am committed to Red Clay. During my time on the board, I've worked really hard and been intimately involved with virtually all aspects of the district. I've been a member of, and I'm a member of, the Community Financial Review Committee because our finances matter greatly to everyone, including me. I'm a member of the Board Policy Committee because as a board member, we set policy and the direction of the district, so I view that as key. I'm a member of the Code of Conduct Committee because having consistent consequences for acts for all of our students is important. I'm a member of the Dropout Prevention Committee because graduating from high school is key, and all of our students should graduate. Recently, I joined the Wellness Committee because the health and welfare of the students and staff is paramount and leads to well-being, growth, and a readiness to learn. I am a member of the Red Clay Education Foundation, a nonprofit that supports additional programming for our students that our budgets can't otherwise support. I am the Red Clay representative to the Delaware School Board Association as a Board of Director and previously as a Legislative Committee Chair. It's important so that we know what's going on statewide, and we have a voice, and that voice is heard statewide. In addition, I have attended hundreds of board meetings, such as the Diversity Committee. I'm involved, I was involved in WIC, I am involved in the Reading Commission. I've been involved with the Strategic Plan, the Supervisor, the Superintendent Search, and the list just goes on. I find the need to continually learn about school issues, and I've attended national school board meetings for many years now so that on a national level, we know what current issues are, and we get to interact with our fellow school board members. Red Clay is likely the most complex and diverse district in the state of Delaware. As a member of the Red Clay, I've been involved intimately. I have a proven commitment, and I've been intimately involved. I think Red Clay continues to need that intimate connection and hard work, and I'd like to continue for the next five years. I hope you will vote Kathy Thompson for Red Clay. I was fortunate enough to receive the endorsement of the Red Clay Education Association, and I am very thankful for that. So thank you very much. So next, we go on to the minutes from our February board meeting, which seems a long time ago. The first up are the minutes from the February 12th, 2023 executive session. And may I have a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, I think, Maria?
Yes. Okay. Dr. Bone?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Dr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Sabo? Ms. Sabo? Are you there, Ms. Sabo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Sorry, I need to go unmute and stay unmuted for a while, so I won't be able to vote for the next couple of things.
Thanks, Ashley, for letting us know. Okay. Chime in when you're available again, okay?
Mr. Wilson is still buffering. Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
So it's six, yes. One unavailable, motion does carry.
Great. And now may I have a motion to accept the minutes from the February 12th, 2020 regular session?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please, Maria.
Dr. Bone?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Dr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
So five, yes, two unavailable, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Okay, and now we've shifted things around just a little bit. So next up is our superintendent with his report. Mr. Green?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you to, again, our board members, all of our guests, staff members who are joining us this evening for our Zoom board meeting. As Ms. Thompson indicated, you know, this has definitely been a trying month for all. But before I begin, I want to take the time to acknowledge all of our healthcare professionals, all of those who are working in our grocery stores and within our community and serving us, our first responders, those who are truly on the front line. And as you see on the cover of my report, our school transportation drivers, school nutrition drivers, school nutritional workers, excuse me, and our custodial staff are no different. In their efforts, they've been relentless since they want a closure and really standing up our meal distribution sites, keeping our schools clean and sanitized. And then, more importantly, our educators, who truly under these unprecedented times are revolutionizing what we have to do in education. No fault of no one's own, but I think the collective will and the response to our community, as indicated, being the largest school district, not only in the state, but being the most diverse in terms of needs, supports, and programs, to do what we've been able to do in such a short period of time, truly takes a team effort. I want to acknowledge our leadership team here at District Office and the support staff who have been working tirelessly 15 to 18-hour days to really provide the necessary supports. Notwithstanding our challenges, I think in doing a large part, we all need to be extremely proud of the efforts that we've displayed thus far in responding to our community needs. We can go to the next slide. And so just a timeline of events. You know, prior to the March 13th school closure, you know, we were in a state of low risk as a state, no confirmed cases within Delaware. And as we were seeing things happen in neighboring states, Maryland being one of the states, actually the first state to close schools, and that since started creating communications in terms of parents inquiring when we, as a district, were going to start closing schools, inquiring if we could close schools. At that time, the government issued the first state of emergency declaration, which left schools and businesses open. On March 11th, we issued our first communication as a district with regards to our Red Clay pandemic preparedness action plan. That communication went out at 3:30 on that Wednesday by 3:45. It is deemed invalid because the state had initiated or disclosed its first confirmed case. Prior to that, we had had some notice from DIAA because the Conrad Girls basketball team was in the playoffs. And unfortunately, the University of Delaware basically notified the state that they were not going to host playoff games. We were in turn asked to host a playoff game. Conrad was also encouraged by the state to pre-sell basketball tickets in which they did an amazing job of literally selling 300 tickets in 30 minutes. And shortly thereafter, we received a notice from the Department of Education and DIAA to say they wanted us to hold off on this pre-sale of tickets, in essence, to wait until they had a coronavirus or COVID-19 meeting. And that followed Thursday. They delayed the game to a Friday or Saturday, but then subsequently postponed those playoff games. And then on the evening of March 13th, the governor had announced a initial two-week closure from March 16th through the 27th to give us, in essence, time to clean and sanitize schools and also to make sure that we were positioning ourselves and becoming prepared for where we currently find ourselves present day. At that point, on the 13th, there were additional four confirmed cases in the state. They were all clustered at the University of Delaware. We were still deemed low-risk. As a cabinet, we met Saturday the 14th to really look at how we were going to set up meal distribution planning because that was our first primary goal for that following week. I'm happy to say we did stand up four sites on the initial day, that being Balt's, Richardson Park, Stanton Middle School, and Warner Elementary. And then we expanded to what we currently have, our 20 sites across the district. Just to let folks know how far we've evolved, yesterday, we served 3,700 students throughout our district at our various meal distribution sites. We steadily watch those numbers increase, and as we monitor that, it demonstrates the ongoing need within our community, and which you'll see later on in the report, the total number of meals that have been dispersed throughout our community thus far. Fast forward to March 22nd, the governor on a Sunday evening. You know, unbeknownst to many across the state, we found out at the same time as the community that schools would now be closed through May 15th. And then on the 23rd, we began our process to look at the structure of finalizing our remote learning framework was kicked off last week. We started that again the week of March 30th. We printed and distributed materials and really didn't recognize that broad level of need again across our community as it related to printed material. We have over 8,000 or so devices deployed in terms of Chromebooks. We are continuing to respond to those needs for families and/or households that have barriers as it relates to technology. I saw Balt's Elementary again responding today. On April 1st, we noticed our modification of spring break. We were requested to submit a plan in terms of remote learning framework plan to the Department of Education on April 3rd. That plan required us to ensure 188-day teacher work calendar along with the student requirement for hours, which is 1060, 1,060 hours for students in grades K to 11, and then for seniors, excuse me, 1,032 hours. So understanding that we're still in a stay-home provisional order, it made logical sense for us to modify our spring break to get four days back, which would limit the number of days because the state has yet to determine whether or not the two weeks between the 16th and 27th will be time forgiven. So we had to process our framework and our remote learning plan, ensuring that we met Title 14 requirements for 188-day teacher work calendar for 10-month employees. We submitted that plan on Friday, April 3rd, and now we find ourselves here at our regular scheduled board meeting via Zoom. We can go to the next slide. And so again, really looking at the number of meals. This is just a visual and showing, you know, our meal distribution sites and our feeding sites and just really coalescing and making sure that we also distribute our printed materials. And we also have to be reminded that we're dealing with a health crisis. And so we're thankful, I'm thankful, to the number of folks who have reached out, who want to volunteer, who want to support. But we are, you know, social distancing and limiting the spread. We've seen the numbers increase from one on Wednesday, March 11th, to over 1,000 cases present day. I believe right now we have 1,116 or so, approximately 16 cases with 19 deaths across the state in this period of time that we've been closed. And so as much as we want folks to come out and support, we also need to be mindful of what's required in terms of social distancing, minimizing the spread, and keeping our community safe. This is not an inclement weather response. It's not a natural disaster response. It's one that, you know, we have to be conscious and first and foremost in ensuring the safety of all of the members within our community. And as the CDC recommendations have continued to change over time, so has our response. So when we talk about communication, unfortunately, we're not always on the front end of that communication, which ultimately puts us in a reactionary position to respond to the needs of our community. We can go to the next slide. And so to date, as of last week, and not counting yesterday, we served over 67,000 meals to 11,000 children in six days throughout our district. And again, I think that's demonstrating a need. Our custodial staffs have been busy cleaning and disinfecting our buildings. You know, they've also been able to get punchless things done, but ensuring that when we do anticipate a May 18th return, if we are to return, again, there's no confirmation of that as of this time, that our buildings are ready, sanitized and cleaned, and preparation for everyone to come back. Next slide. Our school nurses have been active and supportive across the district, helping with health screening, helping with safety tips, ensuring that our school nutrition staff, our custodial staff, and in turn, our transportation staff, as they are out and about in the community, are adhering to the CDC Department of Health guidelines as it relates, again, to social distancing, keeping themselves safe with masks and gloves. So thank you to our nursing staff, who've been diligent, not only supporting the district, but also working to support needs throughout the community, whether that's the Delaware Emergency Management Association, DEMA, really looking for support and really helping with hotline calls. So our nurses, again, have been on the front lines and really supportive throughout the district, so we appreciate and applaud their efforts as well. Next slide. And a true need, just again, we have seen students as it relates to protective, personal protective equipment and the need, and as we listen to the news and hear where there are limitations, we've seen our community step up, where students have answered the call, but more importantly, our schools have answered the call and really looking at where we have extra supplies within the district to be able to donate to our healthcare professionals, frontline staff, who are truly putting themselves at risk. We have also had some preliminary conversations as the Western YMCA has stood up daycare sites for critical need for staff, for law enforcement, fire, ambulance, and also, again, nursing and healthcare professionals to potentially, in the future, may have to support that as a district. So we're being cognizant of what the needs are in the community as it relates to our healthcare workers and those who, again, are on the front lines, helping respond to this pandemic. And then to our educators, again, being an educator myself, my wife is a high school teacher, we have three children in our home, and really seeing the ways in which our educators have really stepped up and answered the call, and how they've found new ways to teach from home, again, turning, we've seen examples of folks turning tables into whiteboards, the creativity around, you know, Google Lessons, Google Docs, adjustments to Zoom meetings, and the time and energy and effort to really show the true nature of a teacher's heart. And I truly can't thank our educators enough. But we also want to be mindful, again, as we respond to the needs of our students and our families, to take care of yourselves in the midst of this, as you care for loved ones. As, you know, we have gotten, I would say, past a fear stage and continue to see anxiety as it relates. So we are mindful, and as Mr. Fackenthal had indicated, that, you know, we kept open lines with our teachers, with our buildings, to ensure that, you know, we are tuned to what those needs are, and really not wanting to put a lot of pressure on our teachers, but we also know, again, the teacher's heart, and to be disconnected, you know, we are in a human business, we're in a relationship, and when that connection is gone because of schools closing, you know, there is that sense of loss, you know, I long for today to see our buses back on the road, to see students walk in the hallways, to hear vibrant classrooms. That void is something that you can't replace in our best efforts to go to remote and digital learning. You know, we definitely long for those times where school is back in session. So again, thank you to all of our educators who are spending, again, countless amounts of hours and time to get creative and use the resources that are provided to keep that school-home connection, which is where our focus should be. Next slide. Again, we have our school staff, our ID department, who have been really working around the clock to meet the needs of the tech demand that we have, whether that's really helping direct to broadband access, to Wi-Fi access points, helping families who, you know, computers or Chromebooks may be experiencing tech issues. So they've been very supportive and working with our building, our building principals, and individual families to address that need, again, to support that learning at home. So thank you to our tech department. And then if you haven't had the opportunity to go to, literally in a matter of a week, so thank you to our communications department for standing up a new website that helps with updates, you know, remote learning tips, online resources, information on our meal distribution programming, and also safety tips. That site continues to evolve as we continue to grow in our learning and in our processes with remote learning. Again, we're not without our, you know, our hiccups or our hurdles and obstacles, but we, we see them as just that, things to overcome and not things to put us in a position to where we feel defeated, because it's very easy to, again, to look at what a neighboring district might be doing, a neighboring state might be doing. You know, our approach has really been one of care, compassion, and empathy, whether that was before our employees, but also our families and our educators, understanding that these are truly unprecedented. We can go to the next slide. And these are just some communication and engagement metrics. We are trying to use that as best we can to inform our decision-making, again, whether that would be us comparing the numbers between Tuesday and Thursday, understanding that we had 3,070 yesterday for meal distribution sites. That's also the time where we're distributing printed material. So we're using leading indicator data to help inform our decision-making, and this slide just shows the number of views per our pages from March 11th to April 7th, which is a 973% increase. The number of people reached has been a 508% increase. And then post-engagement, really looking at a 950% increase. And then videos and things that we posted online, looking at a 375% increase. So just as we're taking that site and information from epidemiologists and really looking at the health crisis, we're also monitoring data within our district through our communication channels to figure out the best way to continue to evolve as it relates to communicating and reaching the broader community in our response to our students and our families. And so our path forward, again, there are many questions that are out there that unfortunately can't be answered in this presentation, but we will continue our approach to assure deliver a fact-based response to our community needs, and then our guiding principles, understanding that, you know, we want to keep it simple, simple, simple. You know, the second that we think we have credible information, it's changed numerous times. One example would be guidance that indicated that individuals who were at high-risk population, those who were 60 years or plus should stay home. I think we're currently on a 10th or 11th modification of the state of emergency declaration. So that information changes, if not by the day, sometimes by the hour. And so we're forced to respond to that, and so you never want, we never want to get ahead of ourselves. So it's the old adage, you measure twice, measure three times, and cut once. And so we are in an instant information age, and where folks want information right now. But we're monitoring it through facts as we disseminate and we respond. And we're also looking, again, to continue to define those clear roles for our leaders, for our teachers, for our support staff, and ultimately, in support of our families. This is a huge undertaking. I know a lot of families are, you know, put in harm's way as it relates to whether that would be losing their jobs. We see unemployment rates continuing to rise. You know, for those who own and operate small to medium-sized businesses, which is a large percentage of our children and families, you know, so us being cognizant, again, that this isn't inclement weather, this isn't school closure based on a natural disaster. This is a true once-in-a-lifetime experience that we're all experiencing, so we have to get through it collectively. And those roles continue to change as the situation continues to change. So we're going to continue to work on enhancing our remote learning materials, resources, and supports. We'll continue to work on and improve our communication, our connections to schools and our staff, and more importantly, our care as we manage and lead the district through this crisis. And so again, I just want to end and conclude by saying truly thank you to everyone as we continue to turn this page and move into the next phase of our response. I know there are lots of questions around our third marking period. We will issue some communication. The questions around new learning, old learning, reteaching, you know, we will support and we are supportive of introducing new materials, but we want to be consistent and really ensuring that we have equity and equitable access across our district. Again, knowing that we have such a diverse student population, you know, 16% of our student population are English learners. When we look at our high school, our secondary level, a lot of our students are parentified. So that idea of engagement and connection is something that we're truly trying to work on to make sure that they still feel connected and a part of a school culture and climate. You know, so we're continuing to work on that, but again, I just want to thank everybody. I want to thank my leadership team, thank our families, thank everyone who took the time out this evening to join us. And again, know that collectively, we will get through this together, because we are truly a positive, successful, compassionate, caring, and empathetic school district. So thank everybody for their time, and that concludes my superintendent's report for this evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Green. Are there any questions from the board? So I hear none. I just had a question for you, Darrell. I know you're talking about enhancing the learning materials. So could you give us an idea of what you might be thinking of or what we're thinking about doing? I know it's not set in stone at this point.
Well, and so this is a collective effort as we get feedback from our educators. Would be, you know, providing answer keys to some of the assignments that are given, some of the information that's given. Again, this is an evolving process. When schools close abruptly on a Friday evening, and you're really only able to open the buildings to have staff and students retrieve medical necessities or, you know, resources, or more importantly, you know, you learn abruptly that we were closed for two weeks, and then as it gets extended through May 15th. Remote learning isn't like traditional learning, and I think that's one of the things, when we could talk about having what we call flipped classrooms, it's so much more than a device. The average rate of engagement as it relates to online learning for a given task is anywhere between two to two and a half minutes. That's very different than that would look in a traditional classroom. And so as we continue to look at how we're responding, it's what we're responding with. And again, using some of that insight as our educators are on the front line, helping inform the work that we're doing, how we can collaboratively continue to work together. So again, not knowing how long we will be, right now, we're planning, again, for a May 18th return. But we'll continue to work collaboratively with our educators, you know, those who are working within, with our special needs students and families, as it relates to vendors providing, you know, teletherapy. A lot of that, again, would work in a traditional school environment, is something that we're continuing to manage on the fly as we respond to the needs within our community.
And Darrell, there were, as you know, because we've been communicating a little bit today, there's a lot of questions in the community regarding the packets and the timing of the packets and the distribution of the packets. Will you be looking into that as well?
As I indicated, we're looking at every aspect of what we're doing, and our initial phase, and again, to stand up what we've stood up in a matter of a week's period of time. We're not going to let perfect become the enemy of greatness. And so these are learning curves and learning obstacles. I mean, I think, and this is something that the nation is trying to figure out. So this isn't just isolated to Red Clay, it's just not isolated to our neighboring school districts. I have the fortune of serving or sitting on a national forum with, you know, superintendents, chief state officers from, you know, from Washington State to Washington DC. And everyone's grappling with the same issues on a varying degrees. But we are providing, you know, attention to support, and if families have those individual needs, again, we're encouraging them to reach out to their building-level principals and to their teachers, so that we can continue to work with them to meet that need as they get made aware to us.
And I do think on behalf of the board, everybody recognizes all the work that the whole staff is doing, so thank you very much. I do know we are all learning from this.
Kathy, can I say a comment?
Absolutely.
I wanted to commend Mr. Green and all the faculty and staff for putting together what they have for 16,000 students. I think quite honestly, it's been nothing short of amazing. You know, I've got a junior at home, and he's been online with his teachers, and I think they've done an amazing job. He's also has had contact with the ED, and I can't say enough about that. I think he's a Conrad, Mr. Pro, and his faculty have done an outstanding job. Just the videos that I've seen from the other schools, I think the faculty has done, has gone above and beyond in Red Clay. I have teachers up and down the state through my, through working at DSU, and Red Clay seems to have had very few problems compared to some of the other schools in the state. So I want to commend our faculty and our staff and for all the work that's gone on behind the scenes, because quite frankly, I thought this has gone very, very smoothly, considering what we've had to do, what the teachers and the faculty and the staff have had to do at both the district office, because this is a once-in-a-lifetime pandemic. Hopefully, we won't ever have to see this again. And I think people have done an amazing job under a very, very stressful situation.
Agreed. So thanks, Faith. Any other board member have anything to say at this point?
Well, Kathy?
Yes, hi. Martin, you're back.
I'm back, I'm back. Sorry about that.
You're not buffering anymore.
I'm telling you. What a evening. I'm pretty much, is this a good time to say mine, or should I wait till things brought up by the board? I don't want to mess up anything here, because I had time getting on here.
I hear you, and if it's the pleasure of the board, we would do it during, since you're a sitting board member, and under Board Policy 2011, you can only do that during public comment. And if it's all of the board, I'm happy to go back to public comment, because I know it was not your, it wasn't your fault that you were unable to be here at that point. Is there a motion to allow Martin to give his public comments since he was signed up for it and unable to attend due to a technology issue?
So moved.
Is there a second? Faith, you're on mute. If you're talking, you're on mute.
I second it.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? I guess we need to do a roll call, Maria.
Okay. Dr. Bowe?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Dr. Newton?
Yes.
This, Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Six, yes, one unavailable, motion carries.
Okay, so we have to ask Mr. Clemmons if he can get the clock up so that you can start your three minutes, Martin.
I got it, Kathy.
Oh, you got it, Maria. Thank you.
Yes.
So you're on, Martin.
All right, I'll take less than three minutes. Like, again, I'm sorry for the inconvenience. Of course, I am Martin Wilson. First, I would like to thank Superintendent Green and the entire Red Clay staff, every department for the outstanding work and effort that has been taken during COVID-19 pandemic. I would like to thank the parents and guardians who have worked diligently with the students and staff to transition to our remote learning environment. I would like to continue to advocate for all students, faculty, and staff as the District B representative of the Red Clay School Board. I am asking for your continued support and vote for reelection on June 16th, 2020. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Okay, and so then you're done, we'll move on to the action.
Kathy, I just want you to know, I just wanted to announce to everyone, Ashley's back on, Ashley Sabo.
Oh, wonderful, great. Ashley's back on. We're moving on to action items. So the first one is the donation from the Willis Group. It's the recommendation that the Red Clay Board of Education approved the donation to Stanton Middle School as submitted. And when I looked at this, I didn't exactly know what it, it sounds like it's a check for $500. So is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you is right.
Thank you.
Roll call vote, please, Maria.
And Dr. Bohm?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Dr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Sabo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, motion carries.
Yeah, and thank you very much to the Willis Group. That's an outstanding contribution. We really appreciate it.
Yeah.
And the next action item is the 2020-2021 school calendar. It's the recommendation that the Red Clay Board of Education approved the school year calendar for the 2020-2021 school year as submitted. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
So.
Any discussion? Okay, so I think we need a roll call vote again, Maria, please.
Dr. Bohm?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Dr. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Sabo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Seven yes unanimously carries, motion carries.
Wonderful. Thank you. Now we move on to the action items and the consent items. Is there a motion to accept the consent items as presented?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote then, please, Maria.
Dr. Bohm?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Dr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Ms. Sabo? Ms. Sabo? Ms. Sabo, are you there? Ms. Sabo? Tony, can you see if she's muted?
She is, but she's not unmuted. I, I think she needs to acknowledge that she wants to be unmuted.
Okay. Ms. Sabo?
There is. That was a yes, Maria.
Okay. Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, motion carries.
Thank you. Now we move on to items submitted by the board. So could I know which board members have items to submit and we'll take, we'll go one by one?
I have a few.
Jason does. Anybody else?
I have. I have an item as well.
Jose does. Did you say you did it, Adriana?
Yes.
Okay, anybody else? We have, I have some too. So we have Jason, Jose, Adriana and Kathy. Anybody else? No? Okay. So you want to just go in that order? So Jason, do you want to go first? Mr. Casper?
Sure, that's fine. I just wanted to kind of reiterate what Superintendent Green said. On Wednesday, March 18th, I had the privilege to safely witness firsthand some of the meal distribution. I visited Warner, Bolts, Richardson Park and Stanton. Richardson Park, when I got there, they were on the third, they'd run out of food at least two or three times. So, you know, folks from food service and transportation were running food back and forth. It was just, it was amazing to see with just a couple of days of preparation, how well the staff put this all together. Special thanks to Jessica Terranova, Kelly in Transportation and Martian in Facilities. Everybody's just, everybody's stepping up to what they need to do. After the 18th, of course, I had to start to report to work remotely myself. And then I also wanted to, well, I think it was Sunday morning, I had to get in touch with Ted Ammon. My email went on the fritz, so Ted was the saving grace so I could get emails to be able to participate in this, in the meetings that we've had. And on a personal note, I have a little boy that lives next door, he's a student at Richie. And I mean, all the teachers and the staff, administrators, bus drivers, custodians, secretary, everybody, the entire district has just been doing a wonderful job. And, and the IT guys, the IT staff that helped us put this together, it's been amazing. And, and again, back to my, the young man who lives next door, I've got to witness some of his online learning because, you know, I talk to the kid every day, he's a great little boy. But Steve Fackenthal has been on just about every Zoom that little, that young man has had. Sherry Brooks, Greg Johnson, Stephanie Arms, all the staff over at Richie, they've just been phenomenal. And it's just been an honor to see what they've been doing in what is very, very new to all of us. And I'm going through it myself in my own job, so this is, this is a work in progress. But I don't think I missed anybody, but any, everybody that's involved in Red Clay from, from the board as well, down, down to, you know, the person that was just hired in the last couple of months. It's been, it's been amazing. So thank you to everybody. You guys are just doing a fantastic job. This is quite interesting.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Now, Mr. Matthews?
Yes, hello everyone. I hope everyone's doing well. It's nice to see everyone's faces. We didn't have a board meeting last month. So to kind of convene with our fellow colleagues and hear all of the updates and all of the great work that's being done at the schools is really exciting and really humbling to hear. Again, I don't think any of us can really capture how, how much gratitude and how thankful we all are for all of the work that our staff are doing on a day-to-day basis. I know how hard everyone is working and all of the sacrifices that really go into making something like this really possible. And I am just so proud to be a part of Red Clay and a part of all of the success and the things that we're doing. I have received a number of phone calls and a number of communications from the community thanking us for all of the work that we're doing. Specifically, you know, some of the more humbling conversations are of parents who didn't necessarily know how they were going to make their ends meet in terms of food and food-wise. And to hear that staff have been able to go out to homes and make sure that, you know, our children are fed and making sure that they have the essential day-to-day, it just really is something really special. As a reminder, I just want to remind everyone to make sure that, I know with all the work involved and, and all of this is a lot, and just as a reminder for self-care, to always make sure that you're also taking a moment for yourself and making sure that even though we're in this stressful and very chaotic times, that we're also just taking a moment to breathe and acknowledge where we are currently so that we're able to move forward. Another acknowledgement is that it's Assistant Principals Week and I just wanted to thank all of our assistant principals for all the work that you're doing. And I also wanted to give a little shout out, since our last board meeting, we've had some really exciting things happen in the midst of, of everything going on with COVID. And one thing that I was definitely very excited about was Dr. Terrence Newton had an opportunity to go to Hollywood and represent our district on a national platform. And I just wanted to give a special thank you, to be able to sit down in my living room and watch, I watched it recorded because it happened during daytime hours. But to be able to sit down and watch Dr. Newton engage, you know, an audience on a national platform is just so humbling. And I am just so proud of really just fresh insights, new insights, very innovative work. And it really was exciting for, I think, not only for our community, but for others and to inspire other people across the country, I think is really neat. I know that Darrell reminds us, and this is really something to kind of think about and something that resonates, is that, you know, we are not only leading education here in the state. I've actually received a number of phone calls from board members from Milford and from other districts about what we're doing. Red Clay is such a model for the rest of the state to look forward to, but then also nationally speaking. So it does go back to, you know, our vision of being national leaders and leading public education on that platform. So thank you again, Dr. Newton, for your work and for representing us in such a wonderful and exciting way. And again, thank you all for all of your work during this time.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. And then Dr. Bohm, do you want to speak?
Yes, I just also wanted to say that I really, really appreciate all the hard work that everyone in this district has done to educate our children and to keep our families fed. And often the people who cook, the people who clean and the people who transport food are not acknowledged in our thank yous. And I know Superintendent acknowledged everyone. I love that he had images of our custodians and people in the PowerPoint he presented. But I did really want to take a moment to acknowledge that from 316 to 327, our custodians worked in our buildings and they came to work and they cleaned when the majority of us were not in our building. I'm a teacher as well. I wasn't in a building at that point. And so I wanted to say thank you very much to our custodians, to acknowledge them. And I also know we have a number of custodians who are older than 60, they're 60 plus. And I wanted to especially thank them for coming out. So that was one thing. The second thing I wanted to speak to was Mr. Fackenthal's comments. I heard you loud and clear, Mr. Fackenthal, when you said that miscommunication is an issue and it would be really great having all information come through one source because I know even the day after our children were back in school, I had to send a principal an email and I copied the superintendent on it saying, hey, parents are contacting me because they're receiving different dates for the end of the third marking period and they need to know when the real date is for the end of the third marking period. Communication that lets people know about some of the activities their students may have gotten ready to enroll in. For instance, National Honor Society and Junior National Honor Society, I received emails from parents that those children had applications to submit and then those applications weren't able to be submitted. So that's another item. And then another issue that I wanted to sort of give a little bit of voice to was that I also know that between 316 and 327, some teachers worked really, really hard in attempting to get their platforms up and running and trying to communicate with families and reaching out to students and getting ready for what was a very unpredictable time. So I was one, I know that we submitted a plan to the state about the fact, I know that we have to fulfill, you know, 1,032 hours for seniors, 1,060 hours for K through 12. We have to satisfy 188 calendar days. There's no forgiveness from the state. But what I was interested in is a conversation, it does not have to occur tonight, but I want to go on the record to say that I think there needs to be a conversation about buyback time as an option. So I don't know if the plan you submitted to the state at some point, if that can be revised or updated. But I think that we do have to acknowledge that there was variation in the amount of work that people engaged in during that time. But a lot of our educators and paras did put in lots of hours. So I think that's something we need to talk about as we move forward. And again, I just want to thank everybody for all of the work. And people keep sending me messages, so your messages are popping up while I'm talking, that's distracting me. So I just want to say thank you to everyone and keep up the good work.
Okay, thank you very much, Adriana. And I had a couple of things to talk about as well. Just to give a couple of board of committee meeting reports. Jason and I both, on March 4th, which seems like a lifetime ago, attended the Delaware School Board Association Directors Meeting in Dover. It really seemed like a lifetime ago because we actually could sit down together and have a meal together and talk about things together. At that time, the National School Board Association meeting, that's canceled. And we talked about that because we were going to have our Delaware as usual. That didn't happen. At that time, you know, there is, the lawsuits are going on, the Delawareans for Educational Opportunity versus Carney, that lawsuit. Got an update that the matter had been resolved. We weren't sure how and we've heard nothing further. So I'm not really sure how that matter was addressed or resolved. We hope to hear more. They gave also, at the TSBA, they gave a Reading Consortium update with the fact that there were three real scenarios that were being considered and that there was a softening of the April timeframe to July. But of course, that was all before the whole coronavirus, so I don't really know what the timeframe is. I know that Senator Lockman and the Reading Consortium, we're going to have a meeting the end of March. That was canceled, so there have been no more Reading Consortium meetings that I'm aware of. So that's kind of in limbo, I think, as well. We got the governor's budget update at that time, but I have a suspicion that that will soon be revised further given everything that's happened since then. And there was a chief's update from, because we have, one of the chiefs is there, about opportunity grants, it needed a, Delaware's required a five to test out. Neighboring states were lower and now ours is four point seven. People wanted to know the rationale for the schools in Wilmington, mostly because the state did not go through a certificate of necessity, which is what every school district needs to go through to prove that there is a necessity for the school and for the state to balance out the funds. So there was a lot of concern about not having a CN and how the process worked. There was talk about HB 100, the need for more guidance counselors, social workers, psychologists due to all the mental health needs in the school district. And they commented very favorably on the state board, which is good and really listened, and I thought that was good to hear. So they seem to be very thoughtful, which is very helpful. I also attended, as did most everybody on the call, I believe, the school board workshop on student achievement on March 5th. So we had a workshop where we talked about student achievement. It was a really great discussion. Once again, I learned a lot. We looked at the Delaware Student Success Framework, which seems to be very complex, potentially flawed, really flawed in my opinion. Focused predominantly, it seemed like, on proficiency. While there was growth data, it was hidden on a subsequent tab. And progressively, it's harder and harder to earn a good rating or earn a higher rating under the DSSF. So that was very interesting to learn about and really problematic in terms of really rating and evaluating our schools on a public forum on the state's website. So hopefully, more will come of that. I know we in Red Clay are talking about coming up with a balanced scorecard where we can really look at more to really evaluate fully how the students are growing. The Office of Curriculum and Instruction was talking about developing the Red Clay Instructional Framework, which is due out in the fall, which sounds like that ought to be good, which all educators will use to teach our students with common language, common expectations, district-wide instructional priorities. And there is developing a portrait of a Red Clay student, which also would be helpful. And then we talked about the four domains of continuous improvement, which are being worked on, leadership, instruction, school climate, culture and culture and multi-tiered systems. I mentioned in the balanced scorecard. Last night, we had the Community Financial Review Committee and that was another good discussion led, of course, by Jill, our CFO. The district is in as good a place financially as we can be at this time. Revenues and expenses are in line with prior years, so our revenues are at 92 and our expenses at 75%. They're in line with prior years, so we're doing well. We are notating all the expenses related to COVID-19, so we will know what we spent in prior years and we can use that in terms of applying for any available stimulus as well as reporting kind of the needs that we have. Finances, probably nationally as well as statewide, given where we are, are... Nobody really knows what's going on, not surprisingly, given where we are. Everyone expects that Governor, Governor Carney's recommended budget will be revised. And it's a very difficult time period because typically, the legislature and the JFC would be meeting right now and having budget discussions, which we could have input into. But of course, none of that is happening, so everything is somewhat, so what's going to happen is somewhat uncertain. And I will give a huge kudo to Red Clay because we, as well as the state, have been able to keep everyone on the payroll. And I think that's phenomenal at this point in time, so kudos there too. I also attended meal distribution the first two days and was mightily impressed. I also attended meal distribution the first two days and was mightily impressed. My first day, I was at Bolts, and I was shocked because within the first five minutes, the meals had already been distributed, and so they had to call for more. So there was a great distribution system, but the need was great even from the very beginning. And then at Warner and Shortridge the next day. So again, thank you very much to the district. I also want to thank the district. Your newsletter was very good, and I thought it was a really great attempt. So thank you very, to communicate. The communication is key. And I think our website, I go on it all the time, so it's very helpful in terms of getting information. So thank you very much. And once again, thank you to everyone in the district for all your hard work. I think it's very clear that everybody on the board sees it, hears it, knows about it, and appreciates it tremendously. So thank you very much. Anybody else? Because if not, I will ask if there are information items for us to look at for next meeting? And otherwise, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? This one, we probably don't need a roll call on, so all in favor?
Hi.
Stay safe, everybody.
Stay safe, and thank you all very much.
Good night. Take care.
Great job, Tony and Maria. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.